City Council, it is 5:30 on the 24th of August 2020. The council acknowledge and pay respects to the Tasmanian Aboriginal community as the traditional and original owners and continuing custodians of this land. All persons in attendance are advised that it's council policy to record council meetings in accordance with council's digital recording policy. The digital recording at this meeting will be made available to the public on council's website for a minimum period of six months. Members of the public in attendance at the meeting who do not wish for their words to be recorded and or published on the website should contact a relevant council officer and advise of their wishes before the meeting. Item one is apologies. We have a full house this evening, so there are no apologies. Item two is declarations of interest. Are there any declarations of interest in this meeting tonight? There is, ma'am. Councillor Lankop?
Thank you. Item 5.4 to the Julie Burgess D gift. Thank you.
Senator Holster, councillor Holster.
Thank you.
Andrew, councillor Murphy, item 5.12.
Thank you. And for myself, item 5.6. And any relation further, any others?
Item 5.1, me for myself.
Thank you. Indeed, closed, did you? And in relation to the item that I have declared an interest in, I publicly apologise to the people present at the Denver City Council AGM, which was held on the 9th of December 2019, for credentially closing the meeting and preventing other business from being dealt with. Thank you. Item three is procedural, 3.1 is confirmation of minutes. 3.1.1 confirmation of the minutes of council meeting on the 27th of July 2020. Do I have a minute, please?
Senator.
Councillor Alexia, thank you. And the second one?
Please, ma'am.
Councillor Lankop, thank you. Any comments, councillor Alexia?
Nothing further, ma'am, ma'am.
Councillor Lankop?
Nothing to add, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Councillor Alexia has closed.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. I've got the motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? No, she's carried in and received. Item 3.2 is part of question time. And item 3.2.1 is responses to questions raised at prior meetings. And as all those questions were answered at the meeting, there are no responses to add. Item 3.2.2 is questions on notice from the public.
Senator.
Thank you, councillor Perry.
May I just say that, ma'am?
Councillor Lankop, any comments, councillor Perry?
No, I'm just happy to endorse the process of closing and closing of the loose, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Lankop.
Nothing further, ma'am.
Any other comments or questions? Councillor Perry to close.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. I've got the motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? The motion is carried in and received. Item 3.2.3 is questions without notice from the public. And we do have some questions that have been raised that I have here. Question from Christopher Mills, 52, Caroline Street, East Endport. So I would land at 54 Caroline Street. Question one is, an internal landscaping plan was prepared by the coordinator of Parks and Reserves on the 23rd of December 2019. Council was aware that a row of ritual trees were sabotaged in the landscape. So all these trees were cut down on the 5th of November and replaced by four garden leaves of all mental shrubs, banksia, acacia and protea. However, are the elected members aware that there are at least 173 Australian species of banksia, 1,000 species of acacia and 800 species of protea? Exactly how many and what variety and species of each of these shrubs have recently been planted? And question two, the infrastructure awards department has 33 employees up during 2019. Is there a staff member who has the university accredited qualification in horticulture? I'll ask the general manager to respond to those two, please.
Yes, three, madam mayor. The trees were planted, there were seven banksias serratus, 20 Australian blackwoods, 10 acacia and 9 oxwa, and 23 coriace, they were the reflexia species. And in regard to question two, numerous staff in council's Parks and Reserves team have trade-based qualifications in horticulture, but these are not university accredited qualifications.
Thank you. Question from Tim McGee at 63 Park Street, Denverport. Question one, I was at the 2019 AGM and would like to ask a follow-up question of the mayor. Mayor, do you still maintain the 2019 AGM was getting a bit out of control when you closed it? Question two, if you may maintain your statement that the meeting was getting a bit out of control, then who or what was causing the meeting to be getting a bit out of control? And question three, who is the person ultimately responsible for preparing and giving advice to you, mayor, about the central legislative departments for the 2019 AGM? My response to that is that meeting procedures relating to 2019 AGM have been subject to a conduct complaint and a determination report is listed as an item on tonight's agenda. And I do not intend to make any further comments on that matter. Question from Douglas, Jenny at 25 Watkins Street, Denverport, regarding white street illegal parking. The previous two raisings of this matter in March and July over illegal parking in Wright Street resulted in the answer is that nothing would happen. When the finished shipyard was going to build the facilities, the first vessel was to be handed over in late 2022 and the second in late 2023. Since then, there has been more information in the media. I refer to the article in the advocate on the 8th of August, which stated last month's announcement, finished shipyard, not get contract blew his timeline out of the water with the government's statement that the noise committed to building two ships within our 2028 timeframe having little credibility. The council is the responsible organisation for the road, before going being so, then the council can be, sorry, start again, before going being so, then the council can be, do nothing at the lazy acre or do something at the living city now, even if this is temporary, right? But there is to come and then decide does not serve the community in the meantime. And question is, so what is council going to do that for going into taking into account? Mr General Manager, please.
Yes, three, madam. The council's currently progressing the state vehicle entry point project in East Denverport. The project is intended to address vehicle access and egress to the port area, including addressing routing and capacity of our network to accommodate both light vehicles and heavy freight movers. The project is proposed to progress independently of the procurement process for the replacement of spirit Tasmanian ferries.
Thank you. Of course, that information came up since our last meeting as well. Question from Paul Delacotta at 11 Copper Place, Denverport. Question one, in light of code conduct panel's findings, that the panel finds that the mayor's admission that she decided to close the meeting because she considered that the AGM has been used as an opportunity to embarrass her personally and that it is likely that the mayor was uncomfortable with the question being put to her, was this the main reason at the council meeting in August 2019 chaired by you at the time as acting mayor, which declared Mr Galmon and Mr Delacott difficult customers also to respect questioning of council that may prove embarrassing? And my response to that is I am not going to try and make assumptions about what the reasoning was around those councillors at that time in 2018 making the decision that they made. Mr Delacott's second question is around pigeons. Further to my questions asked and information provided at the July 2020 meeting, it is evident that personal observations and information given to me by concerned rate payers, pigeons are now in near plaque of plague proportions in the CBD and around the city. Please inform what action has council taken, if any, since this obnoxious problem was brought to your notice, in particular to council properties, A) the Paranormal Arts Centre and A) Paranormal Centre buildings, and B) ensuring property owners, especially those in the CBD, are complying with council laws, regulations or recommendations to eliminate the obnoxious pests. And question three, will councillor's staff and the general public who work in and or visit Paranormal Arts Centre and Paranormal Arts Centre, that among other things, the intake for the air conditioning systems comply in all respects to OHS requirements, inasmuch as that they are not being dealt with pigeon dung and other obnoxious matter? Mr General Manager, please.
Yes, three, madam. A copy of a detailed report, council report relating to federal pigeons was provided to Mr Delacott in response to his pigeon questions at the last council meeting. As outlined in that report, the evidence suggests that eliminating food sources is the most effective method for controlling pigeon numbers. And council offices continue to provide advice and education where necessary to CBD property owners. Council is comfortable that the air conditioning and ventilation systems in the Paranormal Centre and the Paranormal Arts Centre are compliant with the appropriate work of the safety standards.
Thank you. Now, a question from Malcolm Garrett, the board by month, they have my net. Question one, the code conduct findings included that the parent considers that conduct of the AGM may have been hardly, may have been badly canned from the outset. Accordingly, was the person responsible for canned meeting and giving advice the same person as the author of the report to council if any in proper place he lists? Question two, in light of code conduct panel's findings as to events happened at the end of the meeting, will council instruct the general manager to amend the incorrect draft minutes to accurately reflect the following? I amend the false statement that there be no further business, the mayor declared the meeting closed at 6:24, to an accurate description of what transpired, that is, notwithstanding what sort of business to deal with the mayor without authority and to avoid possible embarrassment, declared the meeting's closed. And B, based on the panel's findings, that councillor Rockford was aware of the correct procedure for dealing with procedural motion such as this called as the meeting was being closed, and that a procedural motion as classified as new business, the draft minutes be amended to include an accurate description, as the Delacott had attempted to raise a procedural motion, that the mayor declined to hear and instead closed the meeting without authority to do so. Note, meeting protocols requires that procedural motion should be recorded in the minutes when subsequently passed or lost. As I previously advised, I do not intend to make any further comment or take any further action on this matter. The 2019 AGM draft minutes will be tailored at the 2020 AGM. Question three, while applaud council's initiative to read questions without notice from those choosing to not attend, it has also decreed that members of the public gathering in attendance are not permitted to speak, assuming because of COVID-19. Accordingly, more than may please explain, my members of the public would pose any greater risk than councillors or staff speaking if council adopted simple accepted practices of sanitising and disinfecting wipes, disinfectant wipes in addition to social distancing, ensuring transmission was minimised at the lecterns such as masking or sanitising the microphone. General Manager, I ask for your response to that.
Yes, three, madam. The current procedures are considered to be an appropriate balance, allowing public participation in meetings, but whilst ensuring that COVID safe practices are adopted to minimise risk in meeting and working on the safety requirements.
Thank you. Question from Jenny Clann at Denverport. Mayor, due to the ruling of the code conduct panel, you have noticed your mistake in abruptly shutting down last year's AGM and you are due to apologise for that tonight. However, an apology alone does not give the redress needed. An apology does not fix the problem that the AGM, which is an important meeting that takes place only once a year, was cut short. An apology alone does not restore the correct democratic processes for rate pays. So, may I really want to take to fix your mistake by re-convening the 2019 AGM at an upcoming council meeting and finishing that meeting according to correct procedure? As previously advised, I do not intend to make any further comment or take any further action on that matter. Question two, recent general manager's reports show that Mr Atkins has had a number of meetings with the developer of the Denverport Showground, Mr Simon Want. Would the general manager give the community an update on the content of these meetings, especially in regard to the possibility of any rate pattern, council involvement in any aspect of the developments?
Yes, three, madam. The meetings, Mr Want, primarily going to an understanding of the proposed presidential development of the showgrounds. And yeah, to get an understanding of the community engagement process that they're putting in place and also to work through the statutory planning obligations.
Thank you. Question three from this side. From me asking questions, we can now be certain that our council did not engage in any environmental assessment of the threatened scale development for 27 house lots in the best sector, which later will be added to and will be 76 house lots and two commercial lots in total. We also know that this large development was passed by the general manager, your authority delegated to him under COVID-19, stated in the House. Mayor, do you and your councillors believe that it's acceptable for a development on mainly bushland, a potentially endangered species presently threatened by an unagreed draft set of the council with no environmental assessments? And my response is I'm comfortable that the process is according with the Denverport interim planning scheme and minimalised processes. Questions from Graham Edden, 145, Percy Street, Denverport. Question one, does council agree with the mayor's evidence description to the code conduct panel that the 2019 AGM was getting a bit out of control when the meeting was closed? Question two, if council does agree with the mayor's description, who or what was causing the meeting to get a bit out of control? And question three, given that some electors were longfully deprived of an opportunity to speak at the 2019 AGM, how will council rectify this? That is to say, how will council fix for this day? As previously advised, I do not intend to make any further comment or take any further action on that matter. Question from Rodney Russell, 225, Steel Street, Denverport. Question four on agenda item 3.4.1, if council decides to remove the four parking spaces in Best Street, would you also consider removing a curb directing traffic into the Manchester Car Park for the same reasons? And I'll ask the general manager to respond, please.
Yes, three, madam. The lane separation forming a dedicated access lane to Molly Street and car park is designed to prohibit access to the car park from Eagle Street and from the westbound lane, the Best Street. Access to the car park in either of these circumstances would pose safety and congestion issues for the road network in this area. The movement of the traffic island does not form part of the notice of motion being presented to council to give consideration later tonight.
And question two regarding agenda item 5.8, energy efficiency offsetting electricity duty, the solar panels in the line drive storage facility provide council?
Yes, three, madam. It's estimated that during the 1920 financial year, the line drive system generated approximately 28,500 kilowatt hours of power over the year.
Thank you. Question three from Mr Russell is related to agenda item 6.4.7, replacing roller doors at Surkhat. Will the new roller doors rust as the first did or will the new doors be more rust resistant?
Yeah, the roller doors have been replaced due to operational issues with the manual chain winding mechanism. And in the Russell, with some components, the doors have been replaced with calibrated steel hardware and an automated door opener. Regular maintenance will occur to enhance the life of the doors in this highly corrosive customer environment.
Thank you. That brings questions without notice to an end. Item 3.3, questions on notice from councillors and at the time of the compilation of the agenda, there were no questions, felt answers. Item 3.4 is notices of motion and item 3.4.1 is parking spaces and the notice of motion from councillor Alasdair Johnlin.
Yes, I'd like to move that motion.
Thank you. Do you want to second it?
I'll second that.
Mr Perry, thank you. Councillor Johnlin.
Thank you. Look, I do take note on, obviously my reasons are pretty obvious, it's all there in the statement. We've actually had a time where council have been questioned about that area before, we've actually had it monitored and had a camera, a video in chat at a previous time, about Christmas time again, one time, I believe. And I understand that council's recommending here for us to not do what I'm suggesting and to actually just get rid of the car park spaces completely. So I'm quite happy to put that up as part of the motion if my secondary is happy to accept that instead of doing a trial, which is obviously what I was hoping to do because I didn't know that I would.
In fact, I would suggest that.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
So the motion is the alternative that started before, is that?
Yes, I've removed the four meters.
If you will have that, Mr Seconders, councillor Perry?
Yep.
Thank you.
Again, I suppose it's obvious, we've had them there, we've been through the busy peak periods and we know that it's just causing more and more problems all the time. We've got to start getting more traffic flowing in this area, we want people to be busy, we want people to be down here utilising our wonderful retailers and our businesses, we want people to be happy to come to Denverport and not be caused extra consternation just because we've caused it. And I do believe our entrance to the major car park is causing the difference in what's happened over the peak times. So I think this is our best way to go. So I hope that everybody will support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Johnlin.
Thanks, madam mayor. Yeah, I support councillor Johnlin's comments and I also make the point, removing those four car parking spaces seriously wouldn't have a detrimental effect to the parking space capacity in that area of town, because it's right next door to the Molly Street car park, which at this stage is in working to full capacity. That will happen. I also think the slip lanes of the car park will also, over time, when that demand heightens for that particular slip lane, there will be more opportunity for vehicles to veer to the left, to get into line, to go into that car park, which at the moment doesn't exist because those four car parks are there. So it may even be a line redrawn along the road there running parallel to the footpath with arrows heading into the car park, be put there, but that's for another day perhaps. But I can't see good reason not to remove them if they're causing issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Mr Murphy?
Thank you, madam mayor. I think you've previously mentioned in the workshop that things are a bit tight, we're quite having guaranteed services, my nine inch grinder, take care of it, just as assistance. I think it's been a long going issue for a long period of time. I think it's about time that we've, and I commend councillor Johnlin for bringing it to the table tonight and look forward to seeing the removal.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Councillor Millmore. Thank you. Just a couple of questions, perhaps to the GM of the system, maybe. We have workshopped this and it was quite an intensive workshop and there was some really good findings from their camera that was situated in the old Harris Scarf building. Has there been any reported accidents? And am I right in thinking that the report, resolution of the report was that no further work was required?
Yes, true, madam. Yeah, that's correct. I don't believe there's been any crash data, or sorry, one, one location. And that was, yeah, that was the vice of council traffic engineers that we did, that they did agree.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I just remembered the other day when there was no cars parked in those car parking, so it was like there was no car parked there. I wanted to turn here to the car park, I was in the middle lane to go straight ahead. I indicated, before I could pull in, a car comes through on my left because it was clear and then proceeded immediately to cross over and then to add himself entry for the other motorists. He put his indicator onto Wentworth Street. I'm just thinking we alleviate one then, we could have another even though, you know, the road would be lined, it's just food for thought there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'll ask councillor John to close.
Thank you. I suppose, to councillor Millmore, I'm starting to on the way for an accident to happen. There's been a lot of consternation in the community and I have been asked to bring this forward because of that reason. There is a lot of traffic jams going on in the area, we might not be to the point of what it's like in Melbourne. People aren't used to that here and that's where we get some people doing silly things because they become impatient. I suppose I'm just trying to make things a lot better in the area. Council has caused this by putting in this entrance into this car park and so we've got to be very careful about what we go about to do and we're trying to make things easier for the people to get down to our retailers and to shop in the area. So I'm hoping certainly that councillor Lankop mentions that someone's been going to be silly and try and take round the side. People will do stupid things. Unfortunately, we can't control that, I'm just trying to make it easier on the general public who do the right thing. So hopefully this will fix the problem that we've got there at the moment. I'm looking at probably putting up notice of motion for Best Street coming around from McDonald's while we've got the Formy Roadshow on, so it's going to be interesting how we go. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got the motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any against?
Aye.
I'll ask for a shout of hands, please. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Councillor Holster, councillor Enns, councillor Johnlin, councillor Millmore, councillor Rockford, councillor Perry, councillor Lankop, councillor Alexia and those against, councillor Millmore, the motion is called. Thank you. Item 3.4.2, National Police Check Notice of Motion, councillor Toney, you can go again.
Yes, I will.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Councillor Alexia, thank you. Councillor Johnlin.
Again, I find this frustrating that I have to bring this up again. So at Lookout, since I've been a councillor, this has been brought forward by other councils twice and been knocked back, not voted for in the majority from all 29 councils around Tassie, which is just crazy, I believe. We are seen as leaders of the community when we get elected into these roles and therefore I believe that then we get invited to events all the time and we're going into areas where there are vulnerable people, whether it's a nature care facility, a school, to go to assemblies, I go there all the time, I know the mayor does. We get assumed that we have got checks and balances made for us to go to these places when if you're just a simple volunteer, which are wonderful people and we can't do without, you have to have a National Police Check to even step foot in the door of these places. So I find it crazy that we shouldn't have that checks and balances done ahead of time before we nominate to be a candidate and therefore it is done so that if we are lucky enough to get elected and be leaders in the community, we have got something out there done, just like a volunteer would. Let alone for work. It's just a done thing. It's not something hard to do. I've had a National Police Check that I'm happy to put out to the public any time. If you've got something to hide, maybe that's why you don't vote for it, I don't know. But I find it strange that it's gone to Lookout twice now and so I would like to take it back to Lookout. I know that we workshop this and my fellow colleagues here were quite supportive and I'd like to see it go back to Lookout and hopefully this time people can see sense when we get it through. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Alexia?
Thank you, madam mayor. Yeah, I fully endorse this as well, I think it's something that I have, that when I visit schools and kind of public places like that, I need to have a working children check and that's something that I use to be regular. And it's not nothing that's out of the ordinary, it's pretty common, pretty easy to get to and to do. So I think it's a good thing to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments, councillor Lankop?
Thank you, ma'am. I do support the motion, I'm just wondering, a question to Mr Atkins, do we know what the vote was at the last Lookout meeting on this luncheon? I know that's a tall order, but, you know, was it? I'm going to say it was fairly close. Fairly close. Well, in that case, I'm happy to support it to be put back up again. Thank you.
Okay, that is possible, is it all?
Yeah, okay.
Councillor Holster?
I'm not going to vote for this. I've actually had a Commonwealth Check given, so forth, and working with vulnerable people for over 20 years, I've said they're worthless individuals. I don't think it prevents people from doing the wrong thing. I haven't, but I know unless there's a conviction, it doesn't really mean anything. Just because you've got a police check, all it tells you is that there are every parking speeding fines you've had. So really, I think it's an additional piece of red tape, if you want to call it that. I don't really doubt it, but it's just another check that we don't put on parliamentarians and state officials, so the only thing that stops you having one is if you've prepared a background. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Millmore?
Thank you. To begin with, I supported this motion, however, I've gone away and researched and I believe it is actually potentially unlawful to support this motion. It's against basic human rights and it can, it could well be looked as discriminatory. Really, what are we trying to achieve, as councillor Holster said, it just brings up some misdemeanours and if it has been a big misdemeanor, you have the right for re-petence, do the time, do the crime. But also it might be nice to note that the UN actually said that the democratic process is But also it might be nice to note that the U N actually said that the democratic process is to provide a system of government that respects human rights and in which the freely expressed will of the people is exercised. And we need to make it as open as possible for people to enter into politics or have a go at politics. There are checks and balances in that, the local government act clearly outlines eligibility and we need to respect the processes that they put in place.
Thank you. Mr Ennis?
Again, I, I'll be supporting this. I, I think it's a no brainer supporting this action and I think everyone, everyone should. If you're going to stand for public office, I can't see it being an impediment to that. So I support it.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I'm going to support the motion. I think as a bare minimum, there needs to be some sort of scrutiny available to the general public on candidates that they don't know or aren't well aware of. And apparently, or my understanding is, non-current convictions don't preclude people from standing for council or maintaining their seat on council. But from an information standpoint, as I said, as a minimum, there needs to be some scrutiny. There isn't at the moment and I guess a litany of offences, even though they're non-current, do go by character, let's be honest, they go by character and gives the voters some idea on who, what their vote for is. I'm going to support on that basis. Thank you.
Thank you. Castle Murphy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also will be supporting the motion and I think it just needs to be for clarity, the difference between working with vulnerable childrens with a card is a little bit different to a National Police Check. It is a requirement now in a lot of industries that you actually have one of these. And I think the motion itself is only looking to, for Lookout to come up with a policy position to lobby the state government. So again, that's going to go through another process at Lookout where a lot of these other conversations are going to be heard. And it's also, the motion goes to future candidates wishing to nominate. So therefore, if a person who wished to nominate to stand for local government or would be fully aware, if they believed they wouldn't pass a National Police Check, that they wouldn't be able to stand for local government. So that's a choice and it's not denying any of their rights, in my opinion, for that side of the motion. So I will be supporting the motion.
Thank you. I guess I certainly will be supporting the motion. I did have some reservations about how it will be used and the process and, but that's not for us to work out, that's for other people to work the way through and it gets through that. And obviously it's the state government who draft the act and make those rules. So I think it's, as councillor John said, it's been through twice before, it leaves to see whether we can get it out this time. But I will, on that comment, ask councillor John to close the debate.
Question, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I do believe, if I'm right, that you actually have to have a driver's licence, a Commonwealth Police Check to actually get a vulnerable, working with vulnerable people. Consider it.
I think you can, I'll clarify. Thank you. Can I, councillor Holster, I might clarify. We're not asking for a working with vulnerable, we're just asking for a National Police Check in case you're confused. Was that the question?
Yes, fine. Thank you.
No, we, I'm talking about a National Police Check, not a.
Councillor, do you want to close the debate?
Yeah, absolutely. Consider it closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against?
No.
Okay. I'll ask for a shout of hands for those in favor. Councillor Ennis, councillor John, councillor Merwin, councillor Rockford, councillor Perry, councillor Lacob, councillor Alexio. Those against councillor Holster, councillor Merwin. The motion is carried. Thank you. Moving on to item four, our annual planning authority matters this evening. Item five, I reports, item five point one is the road network strategy's five year status update. Can you have a number of that report, please, with recommendation?
So much.
Councillor Merwin, thank you. Do I have a second there?
I have a second there, Mayor.
Councillor Lacob, thank you. Councillor Merwin?
That's a thorough report, nothing more to add.
Thank you. Councillor Lacob?
Thank you, Mayor. After our workshop on the middle road running through intersection, corner intersection, roundabout where the Rees High School children come out, we've done some work on it according to page twenty, which is really good. Does that include, I'll put the question through to the general manager, does this include Mr Atkins further going on? Because I've noticed at length, at the times I've been there at school time, that the traffic coming out of the very good road, it's backing right up across the overpass. It's a very busy part of Devonport at school time for both of these schools and it's very difficult like to come on or off Bass Highway. So are we looking just at the roundabout, Mr Atkins, or are we bringing everything in together?
I think I'm direct picture of this discovery. Thank you.
Thanks through you, Mayor. In terms of the roundabout project that's complete, there is some ongoing monitoring of the on and off ramps onto the Bass Highway and that's certainly an area of congestion that's been identified. So this is the final year of this road network strategy and staff currently commence to work on a new strategy document and certain areas of congestion will be identified for future project work to be picked up in the ongoing strategy work that we do. There is an interface with the state road network in that location, so obviously we have consultation with the state government in terms of those interface points, but it is noted that that's an area of increasing congestion on the network.
Yes, I thought we'd be working with the state government and of course, obviously that will lead to some state government funding. Thank you for that answer. Thank you, Mayor.
Always the optimist, councillor Lacob. Take charge. Are there any other comments or questions? Councillor, oh, councillor Alexio?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Just want to make a comment on the Fenton Street roundabout near the Devonport Primary School. Just saying, it's great that it's in place now and it's a much safer road to use. It's a quite regular at school times and I noticed a huge improvement on that roundabout being there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Ennis?
Yeah, thank you. Councillor Lacob, yeah, pointed out the most obvious one is the really tricky area up around Rees High and steaming down. It's a pain and hopefully that'll be considered closely in the next, next five year. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Murphy?
Thank you, Mayor. It's interesting that we sort of note that the Rees High School one, people would argue that the spread of main roads also, that round the school time is a problem for congestion. I suppose also from a comment perspective, it'd be worth considering at this point particular in time, the congestion we're experiencing in the C V D with the construction works at the bottom of Best Street and Formy Road and whether we can address that on a rather short term basis and a long term basis, as that is proving a bit an issue at this particular point in time also.
Thank you. Slightly off the track from the important one we asked earlier, but thank you for the comment. Councillor Merwin, close.
Thank you. My hear is that we lack a bit of patience as drivers in Devonport and perhaps show me a school that doesn't have congestion and that'd be quite amazing to see. Consider it closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion is carried, here it is. Item five point two is corporate climate change adaptation plan and the year two status update. So. Councillor John, thank you. Do I have a second there? Councillor Merwin, thank you.
Obviously, one of my favourite subjects and a very important thing that we've got to do, we've got to be adaptable, we've got to move with the times, whether they did quite a change to dirty word, I think nowadays it's becoming a little bit more of a norm. I certainly appreciate the information on sea level rises. Coastal erosion is a big subject elsewhere. It's becoming more again a subject that gets talked about here. Tassie's certainly more vulnerable than some and there are certain islands around the world that are becoming increasingly concerned about the rises of the sea and what's going on with their coastal erosion. So I'm glad to see we've got a plan in place. I suppose my question would be, this is year two status, where do we go from here? What happens next? Is all on the line? Through to the general?
Thank you.
Through you, Mayor. I guess continue to work through the action plan and the future actions will be brought back to council as, as part of future budget deliberations.
Do we go into a ten year plan then of that or a five year plan or?
Yeah, typically every five years we update the action plan.
Thank you. This is a five year plan?
Yeah. That'd be good.
Thank you. Councillor Merwin?
Thank you. It was a really interesting read and it's good to see that the Devonport council is very forward thinking on the actions to reduce our, the environmental impact we have, especially on coastal erosion. I do have a question. We did have a workshop on the emissions in Devonport and we do have quite a high rate of emissions and my question is the same as I had there. Can we hold the government accountable at all for the emissions coming out of the spirit of Tassie?
We'll take that on us. Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? Councillor John, close. Consider it closed. Thank you. Motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion is carried, here it is. Item five point three is the city's power partnership. We have a recommendation on page twenty nine. Could I have a moment, please? Someone?
Second.
Councillor Alexio, councillor John.
It's all, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Alexio?
Thanks for the change, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? I think this is a really good step forward. We must be accountable for, for our climate and our emissions and our environmental sustainability. It's, though I compare us to overseas, for example, and across the country. So it's not costing us anything, so it's all. Councillor John, close. Consider it closed. I'll put the motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion is carried, here it is. Item five point four is the Denver district, and we have a couple of, councillor Lacob and councillor Holster, very interesting this item. Do you have a move for the report, please? The recommendation. Councillor Perry, thank you.
Second there.
Councillor Murphy, thank you. Councillor Perry?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. We've worked on this particular issue quite extensively in the last twelve months and prior to that discussed the Julie Burgess ad nauseam for certainly the eleven years that I've been on council. In recent times, the workshop and the resolution we were working forward were based on two key elements. One was how do we cap the financial exposure to council and the Julie Burgess? And secondly, having done that, we also need to keep it in Devonport for large chunks of the year, if not all of the year. And with the, with the presentations we received from all particular, all particular bids for the local tenders, which persons of interest, I believe we've settled on the right one, we discussed it at great length, they ticked those two key boxes and it was a real local interest and I guess love of the vessel involved in the bid or in the group that have, that we've sort of recommended tonight to be given that, the gift. We have protected ourselves with a couple of stringent agreements, so should something happen in the five year mark, council does have the capacity to, to recover the vessel and do something else with it, so we're not throwing the baby out of the bath water. I think it's just the best result for an ongoing issue for many people, including me, and I trust the local council, as those of you there will support, will support recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Murphy?
Yes, I agree with councillor Perry. This has been an ongoing issue with council for some period of time. I am probably the supreme optimist when it comes to post-COVID and we received our new vessels in the location at the proximity of Julie Burgess and what it's intended to do in relation to what is being proposed by J B I. I think we can go about this in many different ways, but I think what's been proposed, even though the organisation itself, itself has still a long way to go in being able to achieve the certain corporate level of advice and guidance and anything else that would require standard business, which too, I believe that they will achieve, given that period of time. So as councillor Perry has stated, this has been an ongoing issue for a period of time and it's time to keep moving and it reduces council's exposure to financial risk.
Thank you. Councillor John?
Thank you. I just have a question. On page thirty four, in the conclusions section about the third character of the plan, Julie Burgess Incorporated provided council with a business plan that demonstrates they have addressed the deficiencies in their original proposal and was silent on several aspects. What aspects would they need? Just one. Mr Johnson?
Through you, Madam Mayor. The business plan was reasonably comprehensive, it did include a comprehensive marketing plan, for example, a number of other extended policies that you may expect that organisation to develop over time. It certainly did highlight its intention to develop such policies and plans and has requested certain templates from council, which we were previously providing at this time, but didn't detail those additions in form.
I just, I just didn't know what it meant. Just wanted a bit more information. Can I also ask, what is the difference between us agreeing to do what we agreed to do and allowing them to have a deed of gift if we get it back at the end of the month? What's, what's the difference?
Or five years of financial exposure for start.
But we're financing.
Yeah, we're funding it. We're funding, we're funding a small amount. That's in the agreement. We're funding a small amount, but it's.
Small, okay.
Yeah, we're funding an amount that is capped. Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. I don't mind councillor Perry telling me. Sorry.
Through you, Madam Mayor. The provisions within the deed detailed that if Julie Burgess Incorporated, for whatever reason, wind up within five years, the vessel will return to ownership. Council, council don't have the power to simply repossess the vessel after them.
Councillor Ennis?
Yes, my comment is, what, six, seven years? What happens then?
Further more walk through, Mayor. The deed does detail that if the Julie Burgess Incorporated can sufficiently sustain the incorporation, will wind up post five years, that council has the first act of refusal to rescind the vessel back by way of gift.
Gifts, oh, that's good.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? What are the questions? Councillor Ennis, did you have anything else?
No, it's, it's a very costly asset to be giving away. You know, I know it's a cost to operate, but to give it away is, is a concern, but for to keep it in the city and operating hopefully successfully, that will be a good outcome.
Thank you. Any other comments? I'll ask councillor Perry to close.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Just in the last, a couple of concerns raised just then, there is a year by year operating cost since two thousand and twelve, thirteen up until twenty twenty four, twenty five and that will show you the marked difference in what the, the vessel will cost council and that is capped. The last, the next five. And that is capped, the last, the next five years are capped. I understand, I understand, still got some confirmation on that, but if you can't support this bid, then don't vote for it. We've been through a workshop, we could, we could have supported another bid, we could have supported, uh, cutting it ourselves. We've been, we've worked shop that extensively and the recommendation put in this uh, in this agenda is a reflection of those workshops. Um, so now you can, um, you can turn, turn around and change your model, that's fine. Uh, that's all I've got, I'll, I'll leave it at that. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I will put the recommendation to the board, all those in favor, please stand on.
Aye.
Are there any against?
None.
Motion's carried, please. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Councilor Ennis, Councilor Murphy, Councilor Lockwood, Councilor Perry, Councilor Alexia and Councilor Millborn, the motion against? Councilor Dunn, the motion is carried. Thank you. I'm, I'm grabbing the gavel, by the way. Thank you. Item 5.5, this partnership agreement for the next two years for Tasmania Arboretum Incorporated and then for some councils. One of you, please. Someone? Uh, Councilor Millborn, Councilor Dunn, Councilor Millborn.
Thank you. The arboretum is a great asset for the council and it is governed pretty well by a great group of volunteers who are active and very enthusiastic about therefore. So it's, it's good to see that we continue this, um, this partnership. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Uh, just clarify, it's not a council, I said, but it's a city, I said, for sure. Thank you. Councilor Dunn.
Uh, yes, uh, look, I think it's all there, I sense, and uh, the work that is done at the arboretum is incredible. I do suggest if anyone's never been out there, they should go out there and have a look. It's beautiful. Um, it's one of the most amazing places and a beautiful space that we've got. So um, we need to do everything we can to help them do a great job, I think, that they do. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree, um, with Councilor Dunn's sentiments, just then, he is eventually a fantastic space and a real asset to Denver.
Thank you. Councilor Holston.
Yes, I certainly support it. I like the place to go walking around. The blue life and that, that's, people have been taking photos of, of, like, it's fantastic. Um, just a question, can we leave Garry? Is that still controlled by the arboretum as well? And also, what happened to the built naturalists? I think council was taking that over at some stage or remaining there?
We'll take it on those.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, any other comments, questions, or any disagreements?
Just one, then. I'd just like to say, well done to the volunteers, the arboretum. It's an absolute credit to them, their management, and of course, to our city. It is a beautiful space. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Millborn, to close the debate.
Thank you for your very positive comments on this one. I'll make sure we pass those on next arboretum, but consider it closed.
Thank you. Lockwood, motion, all those in favor, please stand on.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 5.6, I will back up the chair and ask Councilor Dunn to lead the debate on issues of code of conduct.
I won't grab the gavel or I'll, we'll just have me. Thank you, me. So item 5.6, code of conduct determination report. The recommendation is on page 38. If I could have a move, please. So, Councilor Millborn, thank you.
Second.
Councilor Perry, thank you. Councilor Millborn.
This has been done and dealt with and I hope that the um, the public can move on. And there was quite a few messages in today's public main questions and I think we just need to move on with some particular topics now. Uh, this has been done and dusted, she's had her evidence, let's move on in a positive manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Perry.
Nothing to add.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Just to make a comment.
Councilor Alexia.
Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, I, I know that we do, there's a rate plays that are here, I know that we can get it right, AGM. Um, I was there and um, I didn't see it get out of control. Uh, as we heard tonight from our mayor, that she's apologized for the actions that she's taken. Um, and I, and I personally can't see a change in our mayor since the code of conduct has been imposed. And I just wanted to let the rate plays know that we are here in support of, we are here in what they're saying as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilor Murphy.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, I'd just like to support Councilor Alexio's comments. Um, unfortunately, some people make mistakes. We've all done it. I know I've done it in life. Um, whether it's right or whether it's wrong, it's irrelevant, I think. To give people credit where credit's due, um, I think it's more important. And um, I will give our mayor that credit and I believe that um, this process would have been uh, a difficult one for anyone to go through. Um, and um, I think that her apology is most sincere and I think it would be of anything for a lot of people.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Ennis.
Yeah, I must say, I was a bit surprised at the time at running the AGM and um, uh, this has proved that um, that wasn't quite right and things have been fixed up, so that's good.
Thank you. Any further discussion? No? Thank you. So Councilor Millborn, to close.
Uh, thank you, thank you for your comments, um, by councillors. Also, just like to add that um, I will not be just, I have had quite a few emails asking for my thoughts on this matter. This has been closed and I'm, I'm not also going to get into any banter by emailing anyone in the public file. So consider it closed. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any against? All consider that motion carried. Thank you. I'll um, ask. Thank you, Chair. We'll give the mayor that and to chair the rest of the meeting. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to item 5.7, this is the Denver Supply Saving Club's proposal. And then moving to the.
Second.
Okay, Councilor Dunn, Councilor Ennis, Councilor Dunn.
Um, we've worked shop this, uh, I think it's a great thing. Good on the Denver Port Supply Saving Club's members for coming up with a great idea. Um, I'm sure everyone would have similar opinions to this, I'm pretty sure. Um, I hope that it's successful. I hope they make a lot of money. It's a great fundraising opportunity for them and certainly great for the community to have a chaos to go and get, we hope, an icy pole or a bag of lollies or a pack of chips or whatever the kids, the bad things that they like to have. Um, we've all done it, we're all going to do it and I think that it's great for the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Ennis.
Yeah, I think it's uh, an opportunity to provide a good service for the community. Um, and without the bluff, nothing better. And to take the kids, all the grandkids and enjoy. Thank you.
Um, Councilor Perry.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I'm going to support the recommendation, uh, we, we workshop this as well. And clearly, there's an unmet demand at the bluff, at the bluff. Um, and I actually hope that over time that they're offering, the surplus offering in their hours um, have increased to meet further demand because this will go some way in providing the demand, it's not doing the met, but uh, we still, as city will still fall short around that, around the uh, the bluff precinct for a, a beach shop. But this is some way of mitigating that and let's see if the future holds. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Alexia.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Obviously, this is also as well. Um, that area, maybe the bluff, the playground area and children play, it's a, it's a really a great place to visit, especially on long weekends and weekends. And unfortunately, sometimes on those weekends, there's nothing there. It's open to, to grab your icy pole or maybe pack of chips, whatever you want with the kids. It's a perfect opportunity for the Life Saving Club as well to raise some money for them and I'll be fully supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Murphy.
Yeah, long time coming.
Thank you. Any other comments? Uh, Councilor Dunn, to close. Consider it closed. Thank you all, the motion, all those in favor, please stand on.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 5.9 is the environmental strategy 2019 to 2024, you choose status update. Will move, please.
I move.
Councilor Holston, do you have a second, then? Second. Councilor Dunn, thank you. Councilor Holston.
This is all in the report, recommendation. It's to support the status of the actions and the moratoriums and structure strategies, so from 2019 to 2024. It's an important um, document that council supports. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Dunn.
Yeah, it's certainly a good start. I know we can do more and we can do better and I know that we want to improve on this all the time. So it's good to have a good starting basis, but I certainly would like to see us work uh, towards increasing what we do and I think we'll get better at it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All these, Councilor Ennis.
It's important that uh, we uh, demonstrate good leadership in these areas and uh, sometimes it takes council um, to show the way uh, for other people who don't see um, the benefit of these things, but the benefit to the greater good will be um, will be seen through these, these strategies. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilor Holston, to close.
Yes, there's a very important things for the future. At the moment, we're talking about a climate change of about meter is rising sea level. Talking to some people from the Bureau of Meteorology and they're looking at a prediction to be with the university and CSR and safe working hub. And they're looking at the possibility that we could have about a 40 meter rise in sea level, which will make a lot of our city very interesting, whatever happens. So hopefully, like, they'll sort things out until now and when I'm not here.
Thank you, Councilor Holston. I'll put the motion, all those in favor, please stand on.
Aye.
Ready against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 5.9 is council events and impacts of COVID warranty.
So moved, ma'am.
Councilor Lake, thank you.
Second.
Councilor Murphy, thank you. Councilor Lake.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, I support the recommendation. Um, of course, writing the report, Mrs Hampton, that would have been very difficult to put towards us that we need to cancel uh, Christmas and New Year's events. It's not an easy thing to do and it's the same for us around the table. Um, it'll most likely, will draw some criticism from the general public. However, I'm sure that the majority of our rate players will understand during this very um, difficult time of COVID-19. Uh, as Mrs Hampton stated in her recommendation, uh, smaller, safer community events is what uh, she's looking forward to with working on with her team, events team. And I do remember some years ago, we had lighting up Denver Port, which was fantastic and stuck for a few reasons. But I think a lot of the households now, during this difficult time, will be happy to dust off those decorations and put them up. And it makes for a very safe way for families to get some Christmas spirit to drive around the neighbourhood and to be able to see uh, Christmas, what it's all about. Um, I'm sure that during um, the pandemic, that we can come up with lots of events. So it's one of those things, I mean, with the lighting up, it could be, and some people don't like the idea of a competition, but if you make it all about children, I think it will be well accepted. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Councilor Murphy, to the second.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, I think it's just a sign of time, to be honest. It's a common sense approach. These things take a little time or a period of time to organise, so it's not something that you can postpone. Um, you've got to make decisions early. Um, as I said, the common sense approach, it's a very new world we live in.
Thank you. Councilor Dunn.
Uh, look, I think it's obviously a very sad day for us to have to allow this to happen, but it only makes sense during this unprecedented times. I think what we need to do is take heed of how good the events were last year. I mean, they just bring a smile on my face, just reading about how many people were involved and what a great both nights were, how um, what a wonderful community events we had. And I think we take heed of that and make sure that when we get to that point where we have them again, they're going to be even bigger and even better because people are just being so excited to get back to that. Unfortunately, this year it ain't going to happen. It's a shame, but we can see a lot of things are getting cancelled. Um, and it's just the way it's going to be, but I'm sure our staff are amazing and they're going to come up with some really great ideas to do something a bit different this year. And next year, hopefully, we can get back to the way we were. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilor Alexia.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I'll be supporting this recommendation. I just want to say a big thank you to Karen and her team because um, having so many cancellations on the list there, it must be very difficult to come up with ideas of how to run things a bit differently. But we are in a difficult time at the moment. Um, and we are seeing a lot of changes in a lot of workplaces. And I've said in my workplace that we have to change our business, the way we receive COVID, uh, hitting uh, sort of North West Coast in Tasmania. Um, it is hard to imagine Christmas being a little bit different because events are amazing for the last few years. But I guess it's going to be different this year, but hopefully, um, we can put a smile on the children's faces because that's what it's all about, getting the kids happy and providing something for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Perry.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I agree with all the previous speakers. Um, clearly, the limitation stands at 500 at the moment, but even if that were lifted to 1,000 or 2,000 in the next two months, that's still, particularly our two main events, Christmas parade and New Year's event, would still be too short or not enough uh, for us to run a quality event and safety. So uh, but yeah, as I said, even at 2,000, we would not be able to do that. Um, I don't see things changing anytime soon. And of course, there is, there is leading organisation, and leading up to those dates, they can't be organised in a week. If something radically changed in early December, that's just too late. Uh, I also commend Karen for her report and giving us all the opportunity to offer feedback on it and to come up with a recommendation because I think the recommendation summarises all the comments that I saw around it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
Um, I'd like to congratulate all of our fans, particularly the community services, they um, getting people connected. I remember the period of lockdown in council, um, when this, the city was shut down. But um, and also, all are still working on, on events and handling like a piece of paper. Looking forward to continuing those conversations. Um, Councilor Lake, would you call this place?
Thank you, ma'am. Um, in our role as leaders in this community, it is our responsibility to keep our community as safe as we can. None of us in this room tonight want an outbreak to happen, so we better to err on the side of caution. We're very conscious, of course, that the community needs these events and always to look forward to. And as it's been previously stated, our events are always very successful. Um, and I can attest that Mrs, that Mrs Hampton, sorry about that, and the team are working on events along with the Denver Food and Wine Committee for smaller events early in the new year, if everything goes to plan. So we are conscious that the community needs this, uh, but we will do the right thing, the right thing by then during this crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll put the motion, all those in favor, please stand on.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 5.10, this expression's been cast in. long term, the option that's been presented to the council is a smart one. I commend the author of the report in relation to the work that's been done. And I totally emphasise and understand that the commitment is, as in the recommendation, the council to work with Devonport Men's Shed Club to endeavour to assist them in finding alternative venue for their operations. I think we need to be conscious that that organisation is a good one for the Devonport community. But I think on a longer term basis, the facility is more appropriate for the use as you recommended in my recommendation.
Thank you, Castle Hallister. No, I think Castle Hallister.
Yes, I'm also going to recommend that.
Castle Hallister, could you put your hand up?
I'm also going to support the recommendation. Don't know if it's possible somehow for the council to somehow or other get control of part of Devonfield apparently under the NDIS. They have to get rid of their workshops. So obviously, they're going to become vacant. Maybe there's some sort of a partnership that can be helped because the facilities up there are fantastic for men's shed. They've got machinery there that they probably wouldn't have anywhere else in Australia because of what Devonfield used to do years ago. I know in the past, we've had trouble with the playhouse and the gymnasium with noise and things like that. And I think if we had a whole lot of machinery where the gym used to be, we would have a lot more problems with the playhouse than what we've had over the years. Boys would be one of their issues. Babies, believe it or not, often soak for a couple of hours during the day when they're there. So it's not going to work. So I'm supporting the recommendation. And hopefully, somehow or other, it would be great if some partnership was formed in with Devonfield to hide that off somehow. But anyway, that's a future reference.
Thank you. Castle John.
Thank you. I suppose we use this opportunity to cry out some wonderful benevolent owners of sheds out there and try and wonderful advocates, maybe you can make a story on it, and try and look after the men's shed. They need to find a new home. It's pretty obvious. It's a shame we can't come to that with this centre. It's not suitable as much as we'd like it to be. But so perhaps we could get the word out there that we really need to find them a new home and we really need to help them. It's a wonderful organisation. The men's sheds around Tassie are incredible in what they do and what they achieve. So hopefully, we can get the word out there and maybe someone might come up with an idea of a space that's suitable for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, I agree with the recommendation and totally agree with the speakers that just spoke. I too have a bit of concerns with the Devonport Men's Shed and hopefully, we find them a suitable location so they can have their meetings back as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Castle Lakoff.
Thank you, ma'am. I support the recommendation. There was four people who would have liked or had that space. But I just wanted to assure members of the Public Gallery and those listening and watching that we do whatever we can to get these people at home within reason. The men's shed is a very important space. It's just like somewhere to come together and make a feast or do woodwork. It's very important for mental health. A lot of men in our community are on their own and have nowhere to go. And they have formed many, many friendships and bonds throughout the years. And I know that when the shed was at the Devonport Community Centre, it was a real winner. But of course, they've outrun that with certain restrictions. And we have Mr Reed in the Public Gallery today who did write to us all. And I have said to him that I'm more than happy to work with council officers to see what we can do to find them a workspace. So we've done to Mrs Hampton for putting that in as a second part of the recommendation. And I look forward to seeing not only the Dudo up in their new home, but of course, to work with the Devonport Men's Shed. Thank you.
Thank you. Castle Muthi, close.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you to all the speakers for their comments. And Council Lakoff really on the head of importance of the men's shed in relation to mental health. Having said that.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item five point one, this home of the landscape management plan. Do I have a move of the motion, please, on page 51?
So moved.
Castle Muthi, Castle Hallister, Castle Muthi.
Certainly, it's very important to this community, in my opinion. It is a unique circumstance that we are where we are. And we have Tasmania's only Prime Minister come from Devonport. So I think it's important. I know Council Lakoff is a very much a passion of hers. And having worked up there or volunteered up there on a number of occasions, it's in much need of the support that's recommended in this recommendation.
Thank you. Castle Hallister.
Yes, I certainly support the recommendation. It's just a pity that we haven't been able to get federal government's support for the same of the years. It is a cherished item that should be supported by the federal government. And hopefully, it'll happen eventually. Thank you.
Thank you. Don't think Castle Lakoff skipped on that bit.
I did. Castle Lakoff never skipped on the boundary.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I agree with the previous two speakers. Home Hill is just an incredible property, really. And those that haven't been there, I don't think would understand the scale of the history there and the size of the property and just how it could look if given the renovation and renewal that it deserves. So I will support the recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Castle Hallister.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, you know, ma'am, I'm not going to keep crying on this one. And I'm sure it's a passion of everyone around this table because it's our history. And as Council Muthi has mentioned, the home of Tasmania is the only Prime Minister to come from Tasmania. But we mustn't forget that it's the home of Dame Ed Lyons, the first woman in federal parliament and the first woman to be elected into cabinet. That's quite an achievement. So it's got a lot of special reasons for us to make sure that it's built in high regard. Now, as far as the garden conservation plan goes, we were given some 70 odd pages to read. And it's quite a bit there to consume. However, in a nutshell, what the plan means is that both council, the National Trust, local volunteers will now be able to use this plan as a guiding document, which means they can reinstate the garden to its former glory. And that is really exciting. Well, as close as possible. It can't be exactly as it was. But it also means that we can use the original garden for functions, which it has been put up in the write-up format, which is so. But we can do either all functions of the garden. Mr Dodson stated in his comments that this can lead to the garden becoming a major attraction. We don't have a botanical garden in Devonport. So they were wonderful comments. And I'm sure that people need to hear that. They also need to hear that anybody can go into those gardens at any time. You don't have to make an appointment. You can go in and have a wander around the gardens. Not like the home. You need to have an appointment to go through the home. So we can enhance our visitor experience. So while we've got tours inside, we can have tours of the garden. And it's quite exciting because there's been a lot of people wanting to plant a lot of the original trees and plants for some time, but can't because we were waiting, I think it's only three years for this plan to come through. It's going to take a lot of money and a lot of work, but this can be moved out over a few years. Personally, I hope it's not. I hope we bite the bullet during a bunch of time and say, right, this is it. Let's go and fucking get it done. And we need to thank the federal government. See, I've got to thank them for funding because we're going to have our handout for some more a bit later. That's through the Local Roads and Community Infrastructure Programme for the 25,000. And as the report says, that will be that will go to the the rock wall and the pond and things like that that need immediate attention that we don't at this time have money for. So I think we'll be delighted for their positive comments on Home Hill. And I look forward to seeing them up there for their tour at Home Hill as soon as we're able to open after this virus has been hopefully cleared. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Castle Muthi, close.
Thank you, ma'am. Fortunately, I had the opportunity to speak with North or North West Homewood. And the strategy from a tourism, from an interest-based visitor perspective is providing that cultural experience is part of that. Now, history is part of that culture. So with that, I will close at the moment.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item five point two, the Harbour Master Cafe and Castle Muthi, please. Is it a move of the motion, please?
Okay, move that.
I'll second that.
Castle Alexia, Castle Perry, Castle Alexia.
Yeah, the recommendation is the way that anyone wants to speak. And during this COVID period, I think that makes perfect sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Castle Perry.
Thanks, Madam. Thanks, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I agree. It's not actually because of COVID, but this COVID period is actually clearly was always going to struggle when construction started on the waterfront, precinct and the hotel. So this is just, I hope it's a very fair outcome that we will provide for anyone in that position. So I trust a bit of support around the table. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I think the Harbour Master Cafe people must have had a crystal ball. They showed it before COVID started. So amazing.
Thank you. Any other comments? Castle Hex, you have a close.
Consider a close.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. I'm going to bang the gavel. Moving on to item six of information, item six point one, workshops and briefing sessions held since the last meeting.
So moved.
Castle Perry.
Have you a second, that may?
Castle Lakoff. Castle Perry.
Any procedural, ma'am?
Castle Lakoff.
Nothing to add?
Thank you. Any comments, questions?
I will.
Castle Ennis.
Yeah, I just want to say really workshops and briefings are usually pretty good. And I really enjoyed these ones. They really gave us some really good ideas and proof of thought.
It's interesting, isn't it? Any other comments? Castle Perry, close.
Consider a close.
I'll put the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item six point two, this is mayor's monthly report.
So moved, ma'am.
Castle Lakoff, do you have a second one?
Second one.
Castle Hallister, Castle Perry.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'll put the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item five point ten, this expression's been used in vacant space and the proper creation centre. We have a recommendation on page 50. Do I have a move, please?
So moved.
Castle Muthi, Castle Hallister, Castle Muthi.
Thank you, ma'am.
Fortunately, I had the opportunity to speak with North or North West Homewood. And the strategy from a tourism, from an interest-based visitor perspective is providing that cultural experience is part of that. Now, history is part of that culture. So with that, I will close at the moment.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item five point two, this is mayor's monthly report.
So moved, ma'am.
Castle Lakoff, do you have a second one?
Second one.
Castle Hallister, Castle Muthi.
Thank you, ma'am. That's quite a report. And you've been very busy during our lockdown. And let people, don't let people say you don't work hard because you do. It approves there in front of us. But can I ask you a question along probably one for you and the general manager? You met with, let's see, Michael Ferguson, he's coming back to town very soon. Is there anything that we need to be updated?
It was a general discussion about the spirits and a couple of other matters that we like to build and do the race. And it gives a very positive hearing. We're looking forward to some feedback on a couple of those things. He has undertaken to based on the spirit systems. He has something to tell us. I was very clear in that our community needs to know from now on and some guidelines in particular. But yeah, we've prepared here.
Thank you. And to the general manager, I think you both met with the leader down to it. It's good to see him, he does.
Yeah, and with the general captain, he probably knows that it was a few of our stake-up politicians looking to just catch up and their contact and so it's all contact and get them to know what we're doing and done. And we'll not put your hand up for something.
Yes. And I'd just like to say personally, as I'm involved with the International Cafe for our migrant community, thank you very much for recently attending their second birthday, which we did hold in a park because of COVID. They are absolutely thrilled to have you there to consider birthday cake. Thank you.
Castle Hallister.
It's just that you met with the CSR, the CSR. Is there any new things to have been sent to the end of the stars?
Nothing to report at this point. We did get a bit of positive hearing. And the CSR is a new person in the position who seems to have some very positive enthusiasm and getting out and about even more regional credence. So we're looking forward to task Mr Dodson with continuing those conversations. And we're forward to some really positive outcomes and hang out actually now since.
We've been able to get what sponsorship and stuff reported and the same.
There's some discussions continuing. And that is probably not quite as very busy as it was in past years in the numbers. So looking forward to some regular discussions once we have some firmer explanation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Castle Ennis.
I have a look through here. And I know she missed out one event you attended, the COVID Cup between Devonport and East Devonport and the football. It was great to see you there. Fantastic. And it was a wonderful day for the city. Thank you.
I have to confess my DC footprints. And I have to be really careful when I'm visiting those football games. So thank you for bringing that up, Castle Ennis.
Any other comments, questions?
Yeah, ma'am. The last on you attended the sports infrastructure working group meeting. Was that the first meeting of that group?
Yes, it was.
How did that go?
I think.
There's enough proof, there he goes, in the room.
That's why we had a meeting, Castle Perry. Look, it was a really positive start. Our staff person who's managing that catch, Carol has a good head on, good handle and had a management standpoint. And she's working through lots of information and providing information for that group and opening back together.
Absolutely.
So yeah, it's great to have representatives from state government and from state representatives of sporting organisations in the world as well as others. And we're looking forward to getting out to those local sports clubs and getting much more information to bring together so that we can do some really great things. I'm really an observer, but I thought it was a good thing. Thank you. And I just want to say that how amazing it is to be getting back out and about with this community. To realise how much I've missed it until I started doing it again. So thank you for that. Castle Lakoff, close.
Thank you, ma'am. I did miss, I'm going to just ask a question to finish up on because it is important to our area. You attended the forum, the livestock, the holding facility on the North West Coast. Is there anything you can tell us on that that's not confidential?
No, there isn't. There was a forum on the Cradle Coast that I hosted and brought some tables again. And then the next work after that, there was a public meeting that also had some news. And my view is that at this point, various groups within the community, within the coast, and actually have an agreed position, I think, on whether this is a good place. So I think that there's ongoing discussions around that for some time to come.
I found that there's some concerns in the community that our livestock will go to the mainland and then come back package for our supermarkets. And you just see sort of a lot of problems and issues with that side. That's the reason for asking the question. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. That closes the debate. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item six point three is the general manager's report for August.
So moved.
Castle Perry, do you have a second one?
Second one.
Castle Hallister, Castle Perry.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Just all good work from the general manager, driving us through this very difficult period. And it's taken joy. And his team's working well and council's working well. So good luck with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Castle Holster.
You're moving with Tas Water Owners. Any thinking as to when councils will get their dividends in the future and instead of going wherever it's going, but back to the right place?
Yeah, through you, Mayor. Really, the owner's briefing really just reinforced the position that that we're in a position to pay dividends in 2021. So it's unlikely for us to continue with that point of view.
Thank you. And any other comments or questions for the general manager? Castle Perry, close.
Consider closed.
I'll put motion, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. 6.4 is instruction, what's your report?
Happy to move that, Mayor.
Castle Lake, do you have a second one?
Second one.
Castle Alexia, thank you. Castle Lake.
It's all in the report, Mayor, and I must say that the new additions of the trees down in the lower part of Old Acre Street with the restaurants, that part's looking really good with the trees. I can remember many years ago when we planted a lot of trees in Old Acre Street. The vandals came along there, they went up, they went. But we persevered with it and it's looking fantastic in our streets. Now the more trees we can plant for better. And I just want to ask a question through to the general manager on our little, I don't know what to call it. It's not the street cleaner. It's the little, I call it the little green machine that we needed. And I know that it doesn't take too long to pay this, but is it working out well, Mr. Perkins? Doing a good job? Does the works department have a schedule for where we plant? That's probably the main question I wanted to ask.
Yeah, through you, Mayor. Yes, there's a cleaning schedule that's in place and happy with how the machines perform.
Good. Just one other further question. Sorry about that. But does it take the oil off the papers if it's going to car up on some of our new papers or?
Probably difficult to remove all traces of the oil during certain weekend. We're assisting reducing the discovery.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Castle Alexia.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to point out that the coastal pathway road from Troateam is starting to take good shape and it's starting to look really good. And hopefully, yeah, in time, we'll get quite a bit of people using that pathway. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments, Castle Ernest?
Yes, I was going to comment on that. It is looking excellent. Is there any chance of fixing up the other bit from the start of the new pathway back towards the bridge?
Not quite sure. Through you, Mayor. The section from wherever the road starts back to, yeah, there's a lot of restrictions there with the into the road reserve. There's sort of no current plans, but something we can go back in the future with the program. Things should be out of the road. At the moment, it's just an old road.
Yes.
Parkway rather than separate the pathway. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Castle Perry.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Just like to say the new Pavilion, New Park Pavilion, it's well underway. The scaffolding's been poured. So I'm honest to speak, quite an imposing structure will be in the air by the time summer time. So it won't be avoided, but it will still improve. So we'll add to that portion again. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments, questions? Castle Lake, you're close.
Consider closed.
Thank you. I'll put motion, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 6.5, the Development and Health Services Report. Do you have a move, please? So move. Mr. John, do you have a second one?
Second one.
Mr. Holster, Castle John.
A very comprehensive report. It was a good reading to see what we've been up to over the last month. And the staff were really good at reporting to us and getting us the facts. Thank you.
Thank you. Castle Holster.
Yes, it's a good report. It's interesting to see that they are turning a few things during the kind of period that we've had. Some graphs are good and inspiring, so very efficient. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? Castle John, you're close. Consider closed. Thank you. I'll put motion, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. I have said in this section, 23 committees and as per our council decision, there have been a committee meetings in this section for three committees for some time and all of those reports have been involved in our monthly council meetings. That brings the open panel agenda to a close at 7.09. Thank you, everyone. Castle 5 at 7.05. Thank you to the members of the gallery and maybe a bit of time to us. And I need a little bit of stick in this review to close the session. So. Castle Lake, any comments, Castle? No, no comments.